All right, well, call to order. The open session of the City of Beaumont Council meeting for Tuesday, December 5th, at 6:42. And we'll start with call to -- roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Carroll?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here. And a report out from closed session, Mr. Pinkney.
The council met in closed session. Item two was conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. City-designated representatives, city manager Todd Parton or his designee. The employee units are the Beaumont Managers, Police Managers, Police Officers Association, Police Sergeants, Professional Technical, Police Safety Support Services, General Unit SEIU Local 721, Customer Service Coordinators SEIU Local 721. And there was no reportable action taken on that item. Item three was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Urban Logic versus City of Beaumont, one case, case number RIC 1707201, and related cross-claims. There was no reportable action. Item four, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, and/or three, two cases, two potential cases, and there was no reportable action on item number four. Item five, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, possible action to deny, approve, or settle claims submitted by Elijah Scott Tolly and Marissa Aguirre. And there was reportable action on this item. There was a motion to deny the claims from both claimants, and the first was made by Councilmember Laura, and the second was made by Councilmember Santos. And the vote to deny the claim was Mayor White, yes, to deny the claim; Vice Mayor Carroll, yes, to deny the claim; Councilmember Laura, yes, to deny the claims; Councilmember Santos, yes, to deny the claims; and Councilmember Martinez, yes, to deny the claims. So both claims are denied.
Thank you. There's no actions on any closed-session items. We have no requests for excused absences. And would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
And I'd like to have the invocation by Pastor Rob Peterson. Evening, council. Bow before prayer. Our heavenly Father, as we gather tonight, our thoughts go towards those who are in harm's way in the several fires that are burning in the Southern California area, region. Ask that you'd give safety to those who are there to protect and to try to put these fires out. Lord, we thank you as well for those in our own community who place themselves in that same place of taking that duty of protecting and serving in this community. We thank you for just a great community to live and work in. We thank you for those who are here this evening. And we ask your special guidance and blessing upon our council this evening, that you would lead, guide, and direct them, that this city would be run according to the wisdom that comes from you. So we entrust this meeting to you with those thoughts and requests in mind, and we pray these things in the name of your son, who we celebrate this season. Amen. Thank you. Approvals or adjustments to the agenda? I think, Mr. Parton, you wanted to make an adjustment?
Yes, sir. On the agenda, we have item, I think it was 14, regarding community meeting for the proposed rate increases. So I would request that council bring that to the top of the agenda.
Okay. We'll move it, unless there's objections, we'll move it to right in front of the consent calendar. Everyone okay?
Good.
All right. And we have no announcements, recognitions, proclamations. So we'll move on to the public comment. Do we have anyone to speak on public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll open the public comments at 6:48. Any one person may address the city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give to the city clerk. There's a three-minute time limit on public comments. There'll be no sharing or passing of time to another person, and state law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. And who's the first one?
First speaker is Linda Hanley.
Mayor White and councilmembers and staff, it's my privilege to be here. I'm Linda Hanley from the Bank of Hemet. We're a local community bank that came into this town 10 years ago, this month. So I'm here basically to let you know that we are, we have provided hometown banking services since 1974 in our Hemet area. And we saw the need for a branch, a community bank, in this area. So we opened our branch in December, the first week of December 2007. And many of you who were here remember that event. We were in a small, single-wide mobile home unit over on Sixth Street, next to Do-It-Best, and we provided banking services. Well, I really want to thank the City of Beaumont. That's the purpose of my visit tonight, to thank the community, the city. All of you have been so supportive of me and of the bank and allowing us to do business in your wonderful city. We have just been so blessed by our relationship with all of you and with the council, with the city. Everybody has really appreciated that we now have brought back our no-fee checking accounts. So we're really popular right now. So, but I did want to just come and just say thank you, since it's been 10 years. I can't believe it's been 10 years since we made that decision to come to Beaumont, and it has been the best decision that the bank has made in many, many years. We've been very profitable, very successful. So if we could go back to the first week in December 2007, many of you remember that we just flooded this city with chocolate chip cookies to let everybody know that the Bank of Hemet was here to provide hometown banking. So tonight, in honor of that, Kyle, I have some chocolate chip cookies for you.
Outstanding.
They're homemade by the Cookie Man, who is a local business, I might say, in Cherry Valley. And so he has provided me a tray. They're individually wrapped, so do with them as you would like. I would like to present those to you on behalf of the Bank of Hemet. And I don't know who or how I do this, but they're individually wrapped. There's almost enough for everybody, I think.
Just to monitor.
Yeah, fine. But anyway, I just want to say thank you so much, because we so appreciate your welcoming us to this community and being a part of this community, and we look to be that way for many, many years to come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nicole, I think that should be up here.
Yes.
Look at those three back there.
It is reportable income, I believe.
Could finance do an audit of what's back there?
Are there any other public speakers?
No other speakers.
All right, we'll close the public comments at 6:51, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions to be read by title only. Let's do number 14 first. Sorry about that.
Sure.
So we'll move to item 14. I'll read that again if I need to. And item 14. Setting a time, date, and place for community meeting regarding the proposed increase to sewer rates. And I think you wanted to, that's your item, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
We've provided notice, official notice, per cent to Chapter 218 of the public hearing, which is scheduled for the proposed rate increase that we have for the sewer system. That rate increase is, you know, then underscheduled to be considered for adoption to go into effect, really, beginning of March of this year. Since we provided notice, I think there's been, you know, some good questions out there within the community about the rate increase and about our sewer operation and the financial implications of the sewer system. And I really think that those are good questions that really deserve some answers before we formally consider these rate adjustments. And so I would ask council to consider really stopping the current rate process to allow us to begin a series of community meetings where we can present, you know, some background and kind of refresh the community on some of the rationale reasons behind the sewer operation and the rate adjustments that we're looking at and the basis for those. So I'd like to be able to get past the holidays, allow us to be able to bring our consultants and our technical advisers to some of these community meetings, so again, we can kind of refresh the community on what we're doing, why we're doing it, and then walk through some of the financial issues and try to address as many of those questions as we can.
So this would involve rescheduling the Prop 218 hearing?
Correct. We would need to re-initiate another Prop 218 process.
Okay.
Should you decide to proceed forward.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council?
Well, I just appreciate the fact that you are listening to questions and concerns brought up, and are going to take another look at that, so I appreciate that and support that.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions. What about the water agency? I mean, isn't this all part of our requirement to notify the water agency of our financing plan by the end of the year? Does this change that, what we're doing there?
We have two phases of the project, of the improvements that we're looking at. The first is the sewer plant upgrade that we need to expand, because we're operating at above that 75% operational threshold, which requires us to be into design. So we've got enough financial revenue coming in to be able to allow the city to be able to provide the funding necessary or to cover the funding necessary to construct the sewer plant. So we're still on track. We'll be able to address the initial outstanding issue of addressing the plant construction, the capacity issues that we need. You know, outside of that question is what happens with the water quality issues. And so that's where the salt mitigation and that's where the brine line portion of that project really come into play. So that's really what is driving kind of the need to increase the rate for the capital portion that we've been looking at. So, but it won't affect the city's ability to proceed forward and begin to address those issues that we have outstanding.
So if we, you know, I don't know if you have a worst-case scenario, but let's just take a worst case, that it goes five, six months before we're actually back at the Prop 218 hearing. This will not slow us down from expanding the plant and moving forward financially?
No. We're still underway with the plant. We're still looking at our funding, financing options, and, like I said, in looking at our current rates, we've got the capacity to be able to take care of that particular need. So the longer-term question really revolves around the mandate of the regional board to address the water quality issues. So at some point, there's going to be increased standards, water quality standards, that we have to meet for the water that's being released. In addition to that, we are under a mandate to utilize the effluent as reuse water, you know, so there is that outstanding issue that's still out there. So, you know, those are longer-term issues that are going to have to be addressed, and those are planned to be addressed, you know, with the subsequent phases of the capital improvements that we've been looking at.
Okay. Now, I don't want to get too deep into the funding, because we will have time in the upcoming community meetings. What are you thinking about as far as community meetings? Are we talking about? We had, here we're considering a, like a workshop town hall. We still have the Prop 218 hearing. It will have to happen at some point. What is your thought on getting the message out to the community and getting more input at that point?
Well, we'll need to do another mailer to all of our affected grant payers and property owners to let them know that this Prop 218 process is being stopped.
Okay.
And to let them know that we will be holding a series of community workshops and then consider rescheduling after those workshops and try to address those questions that are out there. I would like us to be able to start those town hall style or community-style meetings, really towards the end of January, so allow people to kind of get back from the holidays, kind of get back into a normal routine, and then have a series of those meetings. It could be three, it could be four meetings that we hold and, you know, try to provide as much notice to people as possible about what those meeting schedules will look like. So what we'll work to do is, if this is something that you think you want to do, I can come back to you with a report at our next meeting on the 19th with an idea of some calendar days that we try to schedule a series of meetings to be able to have those conversations.
Okay. And my last request or question is, at some point in the process, before we get to the Prop 218 hearing, the common theme that I've heard from people in the community is, didn't we just do rate increases five years ago? And how does that money play into our developing the plan at this point? I'm not asking you to do that tonight, but what I'm asking you is that there is a very good accounting of that process from 2013 forward, so we can answer that question.
We can answer that question. And, you know, the questions out there are, you know, about CFD dollars. How do they play into this? How does my Melo Ruse play into this? Didn't we have a rate that already contemplated capital improvements? And so we'll be developing presentations that address that and present to people how the current rates break down, you know, how those funds have been brought in, how they've been deployed and utilized, and what we need, and kind of what we're looking at operationally and then on a capital basis moving forward.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Is everyone okay with stopping the Prop 218 as per Mr. Parton's suggestion? Do we need, we don't need a vote on this, do we? Do we need a vote to stop the Prop 218?
I think since you initiated the process, that'd probably be a good idea to follow the recommendation, have maybe a motion to follow the recommendation of the city manager.
Okay. I move that we follow the recommendation of the city manager and put the Prop 218 process on hold at this point.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. Okay. Now we'll go to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar may address the city council on any matter on this agenda. I'm sorry. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions to be read by title only. Are there any requests to speak on any items?
None.
And is anyone on council want to pull an item for discussion?
Mayor, I have one item, just for clarification, item six.
You want to get your clarification on that? We can leave it on the consent?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Oh. This is for, I just want to make sure I understand. It is for professional services. In other words, this doesn't mean that we're authorizing work to begin on these projects, because I see the, I know there's still some information that we're waiting to come back on the quiet zone. So this isn't authorizing any work to start on that, correct?
Mayor and councilmember, this item is for professional services that help us, you know, prepare RFPs, and this is staffing augmentation that we use. So these projects are listed there. The staff members are working on creating the RFPs, and RFPs will come back, and you'll award the contract for the design. So this is not for the design. This is just to get to the design. So this is a, this is a professional services contract that we already have in place. We're just changing that. The company is just changing their name.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was going to ask for clarification on that also, and it was due to the quiet zone. And as I understand it, we didn't make any decisions on how to move forward with the quiet zones. We were just looking at the different amounts and the different approaches, and this is just to continue that investigation, right? There's no decisions.
This does not affect quiet zone at all. What we, the direction given to us was to hire a consultant, so we are doing the RFP to hire the consultant. They will do the analysis, in fact, the RFP will come back, the contract will come back to the city council. You'll award the contract, and then the work will start for the analysis of it. This is just listing of the projects that the staff that they have provided is working on. So this staff member, what they're doing is they're preparing the RFP for us, and they're taking the questions that people are calling in. And so this is an ongoing staffing service that we have through this contract.
This is just to adapt for the name change, correct? With the direction we did give you on the quiet zone was, as you said, to bring back an analysis for us to consider going forward.
That is correct, and that will happen.
So we're still in evaluation mode?
We're in the RFP mode.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions on number six? Any other items that you need clarification or have questions about?
I have eight. I can find out. I can search discussion.
Okay. So let's, do you have a quick clarification on eight, or you want to discuss that?
I'd like to see the staff report on the item seven.
Mr. Pinkney, can you speak to item number eight? The tolling agreement that Mosley, Union, Hudson.
Yes, the, I'm sorry, the tolling agreement that we have in place is going to be expiring, and so we're still dealing with third-party claims. We want to toll the statute of limitations further as we, you know, we've got pending lawsuit, we've got pending litigation involving other parties. We're not quite sure what direction we're headed yet. We haven't made a firm commitment on, with respect to them and a potential claim against them. And so we're, we'd like to toll the statute of limitations while we evaluate our options. And that's about all I want to say on it at this point.
And that's, and that's fine. I got it. Thank you. So let's pull item nine, and I will make a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda items, which would be items one through eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight.
I was checking that.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. So on item number nine, Mr. Martinez, did you want to start discussion on that?
Yeah, my question, let me, where's this, number 287. My only concern is for clarification. So we have written here for no councilmember serving as mayor for two consecutive terms. So I have an issue with the term consecutive, because, and correct me, that's why I brought it up, because the way I see it is possible for a councilmember to be voted mayor first term for their first year, take a break, and then come back and get mayor again for a third and fourth year, which gives it a three.
Yeah.
So I just want to know, are we okay with that, or are we trying to limit to two? And I was wondering if you guys were interested in changing wording to allow a two-term maximum, whether it's consecutive or not, for the term of their elected office.
My problem with a two-year term is you may get to the point where you get new councilmembers who don't want to be mayor, or you get into a situation where you have all new councilmembers, and it may make more sense to bring back someone who's already, who's not, wouldn't be their third year, but they would be able to.
And my only concern would be the opposite, to get somebody that might be a little too brow-beating and try to monopolize the.
Are you speaking about me?
No. Yes, I'm looking at you, but I'm not speaking about you. And again, we're always looking at the future. We're looking at what, we're setting up precedents, you know, for future councilmembers.
Well, I think this could always be changed, but I think that you would have three councilmembers who would agree with you about the brow-beating, two others that would agree with you. So my, you know, and my question on this, this seemed a little confusing to me, because it says.
So you can serve a maximum of two consecutive one-year terms, and then if you take a break for two years, you could come back and serve again?
Right. So you could do.
That's the way it's laid out.
Four out of five years.
And then what we did was, we worked off of the resolution that previously existed, and we modified it based on the instruction given at the last meeting. And it's a resolution. This can be changed anytime, you know, doesn't have to go to a second reading and wait 30 days. So next year, if the council decides they want to do it differently, they can change it.
And before this, I don't think we ever had any kind of restriction in term limit.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I think there is a two-term limit.
Yeah, there is.
The only, the only adjustment here is with regard to setting a firm timeline by which you would nominate and select a mayor, and the mayor pro tem.
So here's my question about the wording. Item number, section three, rotation of office, says to promote the rotation of office of mayor and office of the mayor pro tem. A member of the city council who served as such officer for two consecutive one-year terms may be reelected to the same office if such member has not served in that office for two years or more prior to such reelection.
Right. So two years have to pass before you could be reelected. You could serve two years as mayor.
Okay.
And then two years have to pass before you can come back in.
So if you get reelected.
But that's not what it says here. It says, if such member has not served in that office for two years or more prior to, so it could have been, you could have someone on council for three terms, and they've already served more than two years. I mean, that's not saying for the, is it?
Well, I think the word consecutive always, it throws us off, too, because when you say consecutive, you know, again, you have that little break there that you can always come back on.
But I'm talking about the following, the following part, where it says, if such member has not served in office for two years or more prior to the reelection. So I could be, this could be my third term as a councilmember, and I served two years eight years ago.
Right.
So I still would not be allowed to serve again.
Yeah.
According to what this is saying.
Because if you serve two years and you're off six, then you can be reelected for another year or two.
But this would, but this, that last sentence says, if such member has not served in that office for two years or more prior to this, it doesn't say right, it doesn't say two years prior, it says just prior.
Prior to your reelection as mayor.
Yeah, I read it differently than you do.
Okay.
But if you want us to try to clarify it, I read it.
But do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, that's not how I read it. I read it that if such member has not served in that office, haven't been in that office, it's been two years since they've been in that, held that position of mayor.
But I, it was my understanding, you did, based on what I read, you could be mayor for two years, and then you had to take a year off.
Two years off.
Now you're saying, but I thought the earlier one was one year.
Yeah, I don't think that.
You had to take one year off.
See, when I, I agree with Ms. Carroll. When I read this, my question was not what is coming up here tonight, but this is the first time that I've heard that a mayor would have to take a two-year break before coming back. I don't think we discussed a two-year break after two years of a consecutive term. So that's why I read this differently, because I wasn't even thinking that. I was thinking this is saying, you know, I think, I think you say you have it right before. It says, who served as such officer, unless they've served the previous two years, is what. But did we ever add the two-year break?
This was in there already.
The two-year break was?
This was, yeah, there was a resolution that existed from 2016, I believe, and this was in that resolution.
Okay, so we have.
So what we changed, I believe that was. So what we changed was when the appointment occurs. And the appointment, you wanted it to occur at the second meeting in December.
Okay, that's the only change.
Those were the issues that you addressed, and so those are the things that we changed.
Okay, so we have sort of two, two issues, I see. Number one, Ms. Martinez, what was your concern again about the way, I mean, just because these weren't the changes we asked for, doesn't mean we can't make other changes right now.
You can, you can change this, you can modify this however you want to tonight.
So what your concern was, well, my concern was in section one, it says the term of the office shall be one year each, and they should serve a maximum of two consecutive one-year terms if reelected. No, that wasn't it.
It was the bottom one, actually. You're right. It was the same one you were looking at, in section three.
Okay.
But I was just thrown off on the consecutive, because it made it sound, I read it, that you can have it three times within your elected term. That's the way I looked at it, because.
Within one term?
Yeah, because the consecutive.
You could, you could.
Yeah, and you could.
Okay.
And that's why I didn't know if we had a consideration with that or not.
Okay, so. Okay. So, I think that's the first issue. So, you're saw, you're suggesting maybe two years in a single council member's term.
Well, that, that's what I was looking at. Yes, that would be my suggestion to discuss.
Okay.
But you make a good point about the inexperience.
I remember when we got on, I didn't, I didn't agree with it and I really still don't. But I think the council had the, the ability to say that there were three brand-new council members that had only been their first meeting and therefore, they were going to keep the same mayor in place. And if that person had already served two terms, maybe not consecutive, then that council would not have been able to make that decision. So, that's my concern with, with what you're talking about.
Say that again, if, if that.
So, let's go back three years ago. Three new council members come on and there was a consensus with the council. Three council members decided, let's keep the same mayor because everyone else is all brand-new and we just think it's better for us to move forward that we keep that mayor. If that mayor had already served two terms, or the other mayor, the other option, experienced council member had served two, two years in their term, then the council would be sort of restricted from making a decision that they think is in the best interest.
Yeah, but the way it's set up now, you're always going to have a three-two because we rotate on our election year. So, you're always going to have a three coming in and a two already there for the years prior to that. So.
But then, but then if one of those two have served two terms and you don't want to have a brand-new person on there, then.
Yeah, but then you have the other one there.
But what if you don't want that one?
Well, it says here, but if you're looking at your scope though, according to your, whereas, the goal is to rotate the offices of the mayor and pro temp among all members of the council.
Regardless of their, well.
That's the way it's written. So, that's.
I think that's our goal, but I still think the council should have the, have the ability to, to pick their own leaders.
They will.
Yeah.
Because they can change this resolution.
Right.
And that's the bottom line.
But that's if there's an agreement to change it. You know, if you go back to, to my, my example, you know, the three new people jump on and I guess they, they do have the right to take control of the council. So, so, let's start with that. Is everyone, I'm, I would rather not have a limit in the number of years within a single term or within a tenure of a, of a person being on council. I like the idea of two consecutive terms as the most, but I personally don't see a problem with allowing the council to make a different choice.
Would you say no more than three years then, within one term?
I think that already says that here.
Yeah, it does.
Because there's no way you could get four terms.
Because you have to take a year off.
And I've seen councils that operate very well. Yucipa, they kept the same mayor for three terms because no one else really wanted to take that role and they felt she was the best one at the time. Now, their council, their mayor now has had probably seven or eight terms as mayor, but that's it.
So, you could just say that, we could just put language in there that you can't serve more than two consecutive years at a, at a time.
Yes.
Take a year off.
Yes. That's what I would like to see. So, that's the second issue, is do they need to have two years in between a two-year consecutive term?
Well, if they have two, two-year break, then that does limit them to two.
Right.
In their time.
Not necessarily.
Later, yeah.
Yeah.
Depends where the time.
So, I think that, I think that the way we have it will, will eliminate some, you know, make a change at least one of the four years of someone's term. With the current council, I don't think there's a problem. I think we are all of in mind that we need to rotate, take turns.
Hey, I'm just looking at the future. I have no issue with this now, nor do I proceed.
Any other thoughts? Ms. Carroll, you look like you want to say something.
How do you always know that? My body language was always telling.
Because you, you, I could feel it.
Maybe we should sit farther apart so you don't get as nervous about that. No. I think, I like the two and the one. I think that if it isn't broke, don't fix it. And that seems to have worked well. The only other thing, and the only reason that makes me think this, is all of the critical issues that we just went through, the only thing we could tweak is you could do a five-zero override if you're in the min, middle of a crisis and you didn't want to change mayors because of heavy due negotiating or problems or anything like that.
But if you have a.
But you'd have to make it unanimous for it not to be fooled with.
But if you have a five-person override, you could just change the ordinance anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a resolution anyways.
Okay.
So, I'd just like to make sure it's clear that it's not, you do not have to take a two-year break to serve consecutive terms.
So, you can do a two.
Take a break and do another year.
Do another one.
Do another two years.
So, we just do.
You can do two unless you're reelected.
Correct.
So, we just change, so when you look at that last sentence, where it says for two years or more, you just say for one year or more prior to such reelection.
Yeah.
There you go.
And I think if, you just brought up a good point. I think if you restrict it to a term, well, what if someone gets reelected? That's a whole new term.
Yeah, that really is.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think we.
The two-one is good.
You know where we want to go on this then?
Yes. I think the assistant city clerk understood it as well. She just nodded that she understood it. So, she'll make that change. You can pass it with that change.
Okay.
And it'll be reflected in the document that's signed.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll move that we pass item number nine with the changes as instructed.
Go ahead.
All right. I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. All right. Item number 10, pavement management system update.
I have a presentation on this item. April 18th of this year, we awarded a contract to Pro Bar and AMS Consultants to update the gas B and pavement management systems for the city. And this portion is the report by AMS on the pavement management system. The, the purpose of this study is to update our database, our, we, our road system to a, do a counting of the number of lane miles we have and the condition they are in. It also helps city prioritize projects, treatment to the road, and what type of treatment we should be looking at for each segment of the road. We can also use that to prioritize our five-year plan. It gives us a list of streets and the conditions they're in. And then also specific areas in need of maintenance and rehab. Also, the other thing we do need to do this is applying for certain, at times, applying for grants. It's required for us to have an updated management plan, pavement management plan. The way this inspection was conducted, they, they looked at different level of failure in the streets. And as you can see, there are eight different categories that they identified. Rutting and depression, that's, that happens, for example, at intersections when there's heavy trucks and as they come to a stop and then that causes rutting. Depressions can happen through, due to the settlement in the street. Patching a utility cuts, when, when there is utility work that needs to be done after a street has been paved. Cutting a trench through that causes the cold joints. That's where the water can get in and failures can start. Reveling is when the street basically just comes apart because of the poor, either poor material or just because of weathering of the street. Block cracking is normally when the street ages and, and it contracts during winter months and it doesn't come back. And so, there's, there's a crack that develops and at times, you can see the crack separating two, three, four inches. Alligator, alligator cracking is when the street has completely failed. The sub, the, the base underneath has failed and the street is now just coming apart. And at that time, we need to replace the pavement. And the other longitudinal crack, transfer cracking is where there is a cold joints where the street has been paved and then there is another pavement section. You know, the, the streets are paved even in the segments of 12 to 20 feet wide. And the next segment is when it's placed, the joint between those two is a crack that we normally see in middle of the road. It just runs down all the, all, all through the roadway. Weathering happens just as part of nature. And distortion is when you see the roots pushing the street up, or maybe there is, there is clay under the street that causes distortion of the pavement. And then, that requires moving of the pavement and fixing it. The life expectancy of the pavement is anywhere from 15 to 25 years based on the type of the street. As you can see, the residential street tend to last longer because they do have less truck traffic on them. That's the, one of the major causes of the street failure is the amount of truck traffic on the street. And that, that's one of the reasons the materials and, and the major streets are built with a thicker section to, to withstand the, the truck traffic. After the analysis was done, was found that we have about 131 central line miles of the street that equates 281.91 lane miles. The condition of the street is, is a reasonable 71. The way the number is measured is from zero to 100. Zero is basically a street that's failed and needs to be reconstructed. Hundred is a street that just went in last week. So, that, we fall at 71. 71 is not a bad number to, to, to be at. But one of the, the issues that we have is, and you see that on the next drawing, is most of the failures are in the old town. So, you have a cluster of failures in the downtown area. And as you can see, the areas that are, and the color coding here is, the green is 70 to 100 rating. That means the streets are in very good shape. And then, the, the darker color, the darker red, is streets that have failed. They're 0 to 25. Those are the street that needs to be reconstructed, completely reconstructed. So, the failures happen to be all within the downtown area. And the other issue is, as you can see, most of the, the streets that are green are in the areas that have been built in last 10 years, 12 years. So, when they do fail, they will all fail together. So, as, as they age, you know, we have, we have a lot of infrastructure that we will have to be replacing. So, this is, this is a good way of looking at where our street, this map gives us a good idea of where the streets are. And then, we will come back to you to prioritize the streets. This is the map that we'll use to show the streets that we are replacing and how we're accomplishing replacement of, or rehab, rehabilitation of the streets. Cost-wise, right now, currently it would take $28 million if we had that cash today to get us to an 86 of PS, PCI rating. 86 is a very good rating. That means the streets, on an average, are not, not older than 10 years or so, maybe 12 years to 15 years. But as we go down, and if we had unlimited money and we wanted to keep the, the rating at around 80% or higher, we would be required to spend $43 million in the next five years to, to do that. That's, that's something that is, it's very difficult for the city to do at this time. Scenario one, we looked at past years of expenditures on the street and it, they've ranged about $500,000 or so. So, we looked at what would happen if we kept up with that kind of spending. And as you can see, the, the rating drops from 72 down to 65 in the next five years. And the other issue is that the backlog, which was 28 million, now is up to 39 million. That means the streets have now aged and now there's additional streets that have failed in that time in the next five years. So, that, that's something that would cause us to be in a very poor condition. 65 is now a very bad set of, it's a bad place to be for us to be able to come back from. The other scenario we looked at was, okay, what would it take to maintain the rating that we have today? So, what kind of expenditures we would be doing in the next five years that would keep us at 71? So, if we do that, we start out with the first year and we, we have expenditures that take us, overall, 11.5 million in expenditures, 2.3 million yearly on an average. Once again, the backlog does increase because there are streets that are now failing. Even though we're putting in new streets, the streets that are failing cost a lot more than, than streets that need to be just slurried or, or maintained, or, or we can save them. Now, we, we, the streets that are on borderline of failing now are starting to fail. So, that's the reason for the backlog to keep increasing in, in this scenario. And third scenario we looked at was an option of increasing the PCI rating from 71 by five points to 76. The 76 would be, then if we set that as a goal, we would be required to spend $22 million over the next five years. That's about 4.5 million annually. It would take $7 million just in the first year to get the rating back up to 76. And then, it would be required to spend another four, three to $4 million a year to keep the rating at 76. In this scenario, because we're doing additional work and to start off with, the backlog does go down to about 24.3 million. This is a graph showing the scenario that we just discussed. And it shows what would happen if we kept the level, if we were able to spend all the money we could on the street, we would be the, the line on the top. And if we didn't do anything, it would be one of the lines at the bottom. But recommended scenario, the study recommends a scenario of, the, the third scenario, which is increasing our PCI rating by five. That means to look for funding and spend at least $22 million in the next five years to bring our street back to a level of 76 PCI rating. This would, and then we would also, and the study also recommends updating the study every two years to, to, to see how we are doing, what, what the rating of the, the street is at that time. And then, also explore emergency, emerging pavement technologies. There are new techniques for overlaying on top of the streets. There are, that allow the, the additional life, you can get additional life for the streets. We can also look at paving in certain areas. Some of the streets are not completely failed. So, you may have a street that's failed in certain portions of it. So, we can go in there and maybe rehab a portion of the street, slurry the rest of the street, and that would bring the rating back up. Instead of, you know, spending full rehab money to bring the street back up to 100, we may be get a, be able to get a rating of 80, 85 by doing spot repairs to the street, which would be a third or a less, less of the cost. So, there's some other ideas that we can use to bring the rating back up. And then also to explore new revenue streams for the projects. The current funding that we have and opportunities we have for the street, streets is any money coming out of state transportation programs, call for projects. It should be CTC and not MTC. Road damage fees, trench cut fees. Some cities establish fees, higher fees for the, for, for the road cuts and damage to the street. And that allow for the repair, especially to the trenches that you saw in one of the, one of the pictures. SB 1 funding that would be available is around $520,000 for the next fiscal year. Gas tax, we receive about $940,000 in gas tax. Some of that goes into salaries, but it does help with the repairs as we'll be repairing the, the potholes and patching some of the streets. So, it does help us maintain the, the, the level of the streets. And the other option is, and the other thing we'll be getting is my year aim, which is $866,000 for the, for the next fiscal year. Another thing we can consider is having a solid waste road impact fee. And the reason for that is the, the trucks that are used by, by solid waste hauler do cause damage to the streets. And some cities have imposed fees on the haulers. As we're looking at redoing our contract for solid waste, that would be one of the fees we could impose. And we believe a 5% so fee would generate about $300,000 in revenues. Add it up together, I think we're very close to the scenario where we can increase our rating from 71 to 76. If we work really hard on getting some additional funding, if we were able to come up with some, some concepts of improvements to the streets where we can fix some of the streets with a lot less money than what's, what's, what's called out for in the study, I think we can get to 75, 76 in the next five years. That's the end of my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
The potential funding sources that, I sent you an email yesterday or day before with some. with some other grant programs, are those in here or are those additional programs other than what you've listed here?
Those are additional programs other than what we listed.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, Mr. Martinez.
So how does, how does the, when we passed the, not too long ago, where we're doing the patches and stuff like that, how does that play into this? Did we pass quite a bit of money on that to allow to come back and do patches and stuff? I mean, is that still going on or does that stop down that fund over here to help with this?
There's a difference between the capital side and the maintenance. We will be funding the maintenance. This scenario doesn't account for the level of maintenance. So if we do a higher level of maintenance, and the higher level of maintenance would be crack sealing. You saw when we were talking about the cold joints where there is a long crack in the street, well, that causes the failures to start. If we were, we went out there and did pavement maintenance program where we are now crack sealing those streets and we're slurring them, we can, it can help maintain that pavement, that PCI at a higher level. So that will not stop. In fact, the next item on the agenda is to purchase a patch truck and we will continue patching the streets. It holds the street in a good, in a reasonable shape. We can patch the failures that are caused by uplifting of the roots. So they'll play all into it, but it's not accounted for in this scenario.
Okay. And then on the backlog, if we go to this, to go to the seventy-six PCI level, the backlog, do you, is some of the money going in to go to some of those that were not funded and that's why it's decreasing a little bit, but it's still there? Is that how the backlog works? I'm a little confused on the backlog.
Backlog is, is the total, the cost of bringing the street up to eighty-six. So the backlog, what this report says is that, okay, if you had twenty-eight million dollars today and plus the other additional money for the next five years, you can keep, you can bring your street to a level of eighty-six. So that's the backlog we're looking at. Twenty-four point three, it would be, the backlog would be from going from seventy-six to an eighty-six.
Oh, so it would be backlog plus this.
So the red is what you'd have to spend to get to an eighty-six?
Yes, to that, to that.
At that point, if you had that money at that point, you spent it, you would get up to eighty-six?
That is correct.
Okay.
And then my last question is, the federal funding is okay for the arterial roads, but it does account for the collector roads, right? So if we have funding, federal funding, it would be, according to the report, it was residential would be city-funded, federal and city for arterial, but I didn't see what the collector was.
So there, depends on what programs become available. At state level, we do get programs that can be used, not necessarily for residential, but for arterial, but there are, there is, SB one is an example. You know, that's a new program that's allowing us to have five hundred twenty thousand dollars that can be used for residential streets. So there are programs at the state and at federal level that we can utilize. Some of them are, also when we're doing a project, for example, Pennsylvania Avenue grade separation project, and some of the money, well, that money is also going into repairing the street that's fronting that project or that's part of that project. So we do get help through those projects.
Okay. Thank you.
On this would be that when you look at the SB one dollars, you know, that's, that's, should grow significantly because that won't be a full year of, well, eighteen, nineteen would be a full year, but, you know, the projections on that had been that there's about ten million being generated over the next ten years in SB one. So you're going to grow significantly potentially on those SB one dollars. So those aren't stagnant, so there's more dollars there. You know, the gas tax is kind of up and down, so we don't know exactly what's going to happen. We saw a significant decrease on sales tax due to decrease in prices, you know, that affected, you know, that revenue over a period of time. So that one's going to be a little bit volatile. The measure A, you know, we're looking at a two to three percent growth annualized for the next five years on that, you know, so that'll grow a little bit. CDBG also, you know, this year, for example, we allocated about a hundred and thirty thousand from CDBG that can help to address some of the pavement issues within the central city. So there's a few additional dollars that can also kind of help you get closer, I think, to that two and a half million conservatively, maybe a little bit better. And I think when we are looking at the solid waste side, you know, we currently have about fifteen percent of the revenues or billables for solid waste that come into the city. And I think one of the things we need to look at is, you know, depending on how we renegotiate, but if you look at that current program, doing better to kind of help identify that those dollars are being captured and being applied back over to maintenance. We use a big chunk of that money right now to help fund street sweeping and those types of things as well. So just a few more observations. So this is a snapshot in time, a good snapshot, but there are some potential areas of growth. In some cases in the SB one, that could be significant. Now, if SB one gets overturned or repealed, we probably have a different, we'll have a different challenge ahead of us.
Okay.
I just want to ask him on that. Is there any ordinance being developed for the trench cut fees to bring back for future discussion or is that just something that we put in that we can discuss in the future?
We are, we're, we are working through the permit process that we're looking at. We're going to be, we're going to be looking at our fees and looking at the cost of the trench repairs. We're just now hiring additional street staff. So one of the things we wanted to do was do the inventory of what kind of damages out there. What I see driving around, especially in the older part of the town, is a lot of utility trenches have failed. And some of them are our own from sewer department that we've done, gone out there and done some work. So the ongoing, I think we need to look at on the water and the sewer side, any trench work that's done and also for the permitting. As part of this Rhine Line project, we went through different series and we found out the different series have different requirements. Some of our, you know, some of them have very stringent requirements for street cuts and they do, they do charge a lot for their permits. So that's something we do want to look at because that damage, I mean, the street, the life of a street can go from twenty years down to ten years just by having one trench cut into it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Santos.
Let me ask you something in here. You got the PCI up seventy-one right now. And if I look on your chart on the cost summary on that, you got four point million in there. That's the preventive maintenance on that. Is that outside of old downtown? And also my question is, the twenty-three million you have in here, is it a majority is on old downtown? That we have a problem on roads and, you know, on maintenance on that?
It's, if you can look back at the chart that is here, there is, preventive maintenance is at four point eight million. So that means that's some of the streets that were paved ten, twelve years ago. So we would be going out there and slurring streets that are in the area that has shown green.
Okay.
Because some of those streets that are, if you look at the map, some of the streets that are green in five years would be purple or would be getting yellow. So by doing the preventive maintenance, which is slurry sealing, there are different type applications on top of the street, we will be, we will be saving those streets. So not all of the money is, not all of this expenditure is in the downtown area. It includes city, system-wide.
Yeah, I got that. My question to you right now is, is the, you know, if you do isolate the old downtown, what will be our PCI on that old downtown?
Just the downtown if we did?
Yes, uh-huh. I didn't see any analysis on here. That's the reason I'm bringing it up.
If, just by looking at it, if we look at the downtown, it would be maybe low fifty or like forties.
There you go.
Twenty.
Maybe twenty. That's what he said.
On Chestnut?
Chestnut hasn't been paved in over twenty-nine years.
How long have you lived at Chestnut?
I don't want to reveal my age, but, because I refuse to answer. Yeah, they patched it in eighty-nine and that patches are coming off when these streets sweep.
Any other questions?
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Go. Okay. The, you talked about the preventive maintenance in some of the other areas that are currently green because you want to keep them at a certain level so that they don't degrade. Are some of those, those are CFD areas, right?
That is correct.
So, and some of them might even be in gated HOA areas, correct?
Not the gated HOA, those are not our streets. Those are not considered in our pavement management.
So you don't have any responsibility to maintain those streets?
Not at all.
Those are done by HOA if it's a gated community, correct? Okay. But like, I think one of these large areas is Sundance, so that's not gated, so we are responsible for the preventive maintenance on those streets, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, I think if we, I mean, it certainly is reasonable, if we approach the old town areas where the orange and red is predominantly, then that is going to up or have the biggest impact on the percentage so that we get to a better percentage, correct? It elevates it.
Yes.
The worse the street is, the bigger, you know, whereas if you're just sort of at a maintenance and preventive level, you don't affect the percentage overall as much, correct?
We, we do because the age of the street that are now fifteen years, twelve years old, by doing a slurry seal, we can extend their age slightly. The best, the best way to increase PCI rating, if we were to do that, would be the purple streets or the yellow streets. They'll be the cheapest one to fix because they have the least amount of damage.
Okay.
The most expensive one to use for raising PCI would be the red ones because they would require quite a bit of money. So we could, we could spend, that might be not, may not be the reasonable thing to do, but we could go out there and spend most of our money just on purple streets. That would bring our PCI rating high very quickly. But, but then the yellow would fall into disrepair and they would go into red. And that would, you know, then five years later, then we have a lot more streets to take care of. But the, the green streets that are green will fall into purple and yellow if we don't do the slurry.
If you don't do the maintenance. Okay. And the three hundred thousand dollars, for instance, on the, the fee for the heavy waste management trucks, I mean, from what I saw before of the cost of repairing a road, that's like a minimal amount of money against the streets. Is that correct? It's pretty small, right?
That is very, it's, it's, it's in proportion to the damage that's caused by those trucks. I think five percent is roughly what that is. It will grow though, as the city grows and there's more customers and the solid waste grows, it will, it will grow in the next five, six years to a higher number. It could be as high as half a million.
And what the, some of the potential sources for increasing funding to offset the cost of upkeeping the roads, such as if somebody cuts into the road, that there's a fee for doing that, that's going to get approached more seriously over the next year? You're not talking about increasing that now. I personally think some of those are really good ideas for increased funding.
Well, the other option is to, for example, putting moratorium on a newly cut street unless there's an emergency. So we would, in our program, we expect to have a five-year plan and let the water department, the gas company, everybody know that we have these streets that are going to be repaired so they can come in and do what we did with water department recently on the main street. They're coming in now and doing their repairs. Now that helps. The other thing is, in lieu of asking for a larger amount of fee, we may force streets that have been paved in the last ten years, if somebody does a cut, then they'll repair the half width of the street or they will repair the full length rather than just repairing the trench. And so we can adopt standards that require them to pay a higher, higher level of.
I think that's good because I think it affects the public perception of the road tremendously when you go over and there's a cut and a repair and a cut and a repair and, you know, it just makes it look like we've done a lot of lick and a promise over a period of time. And the last question I have is on, when you gave the examples of the different types of problems in the pictures on the roads, obviously some of these look like they're more maintenance-related problems and some of them are more serious structural problems, correct?
That is correct.
So the, you know, pat, alligator cracking might be more surface, whereas the distortion, when the road, you're riding over it and you feel like you're on an amusement ride is probably much more expensive to repair. And I actually think we've got a lot of roads with both the longitudinal transverse cracking and the distortion that have really sort of impacted the public and they think that we're really losing the fight on the roads, I think, because of that.
And partly we haven't done any reasonable maintenance in the last, quite a period of time because what we don't have is equipment. As you see, we had to contract out for patching of the potholes, which is very expensive. It's much better and much cheaper to do it in-house. But once we have that, we can also use the same staff members to do crack sealing on those, on the longitudinal cracks. And those do, that does help. If you do yearly crack sealing program in place, and we're going out there and doing section of the city, and crack sealing, it stops the water from getting in, under the street and causing additional damage.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So let's move this along, but I want to just build on one question that Ms. Carroll brought up, Mrs. Carroll brought up. So you're going to take a balanced approach. In other words, you're going to work on red streets and purple streets and yellow streets because you can get the PCI up quicker and at a better cost and you won't let the red streets get too bad?
That's, that's our goal. So we'll be presenting, based on this evaluation, we'll be presenting a five-year CIP. We, what we did so far is we just budgeted five-year CIP and what we said was citywide projects. The next project, next year, when you will see, you'll see the name of the streets for the next five years that we plan to, plan to do. And we can plug in those numbers in the, in the, in the program that they gave us and then we can see what the fact is so we can better pick those streets.
Okay.
And then come up with the list.
Okay. It's a receive and file. Guess we don't have to do a motion, but seems we always do. So I'll move to receive and file the pavement management system update. Mr. Martinez second in.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. Item eleven, approve and authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Hacker Equipment Company for the purchase of one Vector truck and one patch truck and authorize city manager to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Providence Capital.
You had councilmembers, this item is to purchase two pieces of equipment. One is for the wastewater department, which is the, which is the Vector truck. Vector truck allows us to, helps us clean the sewer lines. Currently, we contract for that service. The company that does that service is based in City of Grand Terrace. Last time we had a sewer backup, it was around, towards the end of the day, it was around five o'clock and took about a little over an hour to get here. And our staff was out there in fifteen, twenty minutes. We were already there. It was during, almost at the end of the work hour. But having, by having that piece of equipment, we will be able to get out there and stop the leak, or the blockage right away. So that would help us do that. The other thing is we would not have to have the contract service that we have with, with this company. We are hiring staff in that department. We are hiring four new members. Those members will be trained to operate this equipment. This is a large piece of equipment, so we are doing a lease purchase. So we'll be able to pay that over several years rather than buying it all, all at once. The other piece of equipment is a patch truck. And with the patch truck, previously we've been doing, we do not have a crash truck in the city, so what we do is we take the coal mix, which we just take the asphalt and we just put it into the, into the, into whatever that pothole is. And it's not properly patched, so with the neck strain, it comes out or with the cars driving over it, eventually it just comes out. With, patch truck has, it has a bed that's heated, so the asphalt that we do get is kept heated. It has, it has all the equipment with it to clean the, the pothole, to put, tack it with oil and then patch it and it carries a vibrating plate and it's so vibrate. And then we finish by sealing the edges so the water doesn't get in. So the hole does last, or the patch lasts a lot longer. So the hole does last, or the patch lasts a lot longer than what we are doing right now. And the cost of that equipment is $170,000. So what we've done is we've, we've got, we've used NJPA, which is a National Joint Powers Alliance, they go out and do bidding for public agencies and they obtain prices for different pieces of equipment. And these two pieces of equipment were part of that bidding process, so we're using that bidding process and we've gotten quotes for the equipment that we need at, for the, for the, for the patch truck, for $170,514.38. And for the, and for the Vector truck, in the amount of $455,505.59. The initial down payment is $140,000 and then there are four-year of payments, which are $11,556,000 a month. And these, these trucks do last a long time. I mean, the life cycle on these is over 10 years. So once we have these trucks, you know, we'll have them for a long time. One patch truck is sufficient for the city. I believe we'll end up with having two Vector trucks. When we do have a brine line, we may end up purchasing, we may end up purchasing another, other Vector truck because if we have to clean a line on brine line and the line is 10 miles or 15 miles out in the street, out of, of the city, then the truck, we may have to have two trucks. But for the patch truck, that's just the only truck we will need. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
A Vector truck. You, you talk about it being used for emergencies. Would that be used in pretty, what's the word, would it be used a lot or just like, just when you needed it? I mean, is it something that you would be using for ongoing maintenance of lines and stuff like that or is it just, just when something bad happens?
We will be maintaining, we, we're supposed to be cleaning up to 20% of our lines every year.
Okay.
So the idea is that we'll be routinely cleaning lines. So we'll be, out of week two or three or four days, we out there cleaning lines. And within a five-year cycle, we should be cleaning the, the whole city. The other thing is we'll be cleaning the lines that get a lot of flow more, more often.
Okay.
So this is equipment that will be used.
So it'll be in use oft, regularly?
And also helps, for example, when there is, when a strong drain inlet gets plugged up, this truck can go out there and suck out all that debris.
Okay.
So it helps not in just emergency, it also helps routine maintenance of strong drain as well.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Real quick, what's your usual maintenance costs on those? Are they costly to maintain or?
These, these piece of equipment? The, the cost of maintaining the equipment?
Yeah, for the trucks, yeah.
It's, it's, we're paying for that through the contract services anyway, so if we do contract for the maintenance, we pay a, a fee for hourly rate for the truck. So it's not, it's, it, as the trucks age, they do have a higher cost of maintenance. But overall, these are built for this type of construction, so in the next five, six years, we don't expect a high cost of maintenance.
And we approved trucks for the street patch, right? And those were light duty trucks, so this one here, you explained already what the use was, so, and the necessity, so I just wanted to make sure in case people ask, have you already bought trucks? That's a different use for this one, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the contract that we have, annual contract cost-wise for the Vector, do you know what that is off?
It's a hundred and, little over 100 and some thousand, 130,000, I believe. And it doesn't really cover total cost of maintenance, it provides for a limited maintenance and it provides for emergency.
Okay.
And this would be a lot more.
Right, right.
What we'd be doing with our staffing would be twice as much work.
Okay. Thank you.
With no other questions, I'll move to approve item number 11. To approve and authorize issuance of a purchase order to Hacker Equipment Company for the purchase of one Vector truck and one patch truck and to authorize the city manager to enter into a leave purchase agreement with Providence Capital.
Is that leave purchase or lease purchase?
It's supposed to be lease.
Lease?
Sorry.
You're making me look bad.
I'm sorry.
Lease purchase agreement.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Item number 11, transfer inspection authority to Housing and Community Development for mobile home parks.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. This item for your consideration tonight contains a brief history in the staff report of the city assuming inspection authority for mobile home parks within the city limits back in 2001. This authority is normally performed by the state agency Housing and Community Development. I brought this item before you tonight just to bring awareness that the cost recovery to provide this service was not something that we were able to address through our recent fee study. These fees are established by the state and are inadequate to cover our inspection time. This service would continue to be subsidized by our general fund. I've attached the state fee schedule as well as the pending invoice for the portion of fees that we pass back to the state. In my opinion, the benefits do not outweigh the ultimate cost to the city. Staffs requesting guidance from council whether to proceed with the process to restore this responsibility back to HCD or continue to subsidize these inspection duties. We can bring this back to you as an action item in the future if you, if you want us to. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yet. Do you have questions?
Go ahead, you might answer.
No, I was going to make a motion, but if you have questions.
Oh, I just, no, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a good, I think it's a good direction.
It is.
So I think we do want to direct you to bring it back to council for an action item.
Okay.
Okay. Number 13, approve a proposal for professional services with Urban Futures, Inc. to conduct a fiscal review and analysis of the City of Beaumont's tax sharing resolution with the County of Riverside for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
So, would you like me to kick this one off?
Sure, please.
And then, may I kick it to you?
No, I'll let you, I'll, I'll let you do this one.
Okay.
I definitely have something to say about it, but.
Okay. So, back on October 17th, the council had on the agenda to discuss the implications of the current master annexation agreement between the city and Riverside County. And this is an agreement that is really, governs annexations for all the communities within Riverside County. And based on that agreement, there's an apportionment of property tax in perpetuity. So newly annexed properties that develop have a 25-75 ratio of sharing property tax. And that's 25 to the city, 75 to the county. And looking at that, you know, agreement, which is over 30 years old now, the question arose is, is that still an appropriate apportionment, an a fair apportionment of those dollars? And so the mayor had received authorization to begin to approach representatives from our other communities to really introduce them if they weren't aware of this issue and also to really kind of explore it to see if there's a willingness amongst our various communities to approach the county on ways to try to address this issue, at least to open up the conversation about it. So a couple of weeks ago, Mayor White did successfully meet with several of our area mayors. So we had mayors from Hemet, from San Jacinto, from Calamasa and Banning that met here at City Hall to discuss this issue. And I believe the result of that meeting was that it was identified as a key issue. Some of our communities weren't really aware of this setup, they haven't been through an annexation process recently. So there definitely was a discussion to look into this further. Also a discussion that this is really a significant issue that really the balance of our county really needs to discuss and, and there was some discussion, I believe, about trying to approach the balance of the communities to talk about this issue. In addition to that, I had approached Urban Futures about providing a professional services consultant contract to be able to do a fiscal analysis of the apportionment agreements that were there. Attached to this is a scope of services pursuant to that work. What it would do, it'd be looking at direct and indirect fiscal implications for newly annexed areas, it could look at some of the areas that we've annexed and are subject to these provisions today. And then go back and look at the apportionment of costs associated with what services are being delivered and provide a report back that would help the city council see kind of financially what the implications are in terms of cost and the amount of revenues coming to the city in terms of the apportionment, with some recommendations on what, maybe what that apportionment ought to look like moving forward. So with that, Mayor, turn it to you if there's anything that I overstated or maybe didn't cover.
Okay. Just a little clarification, the master annexation agreements are between the county and each city. There's not one master for everybody. So each city would need to address their own master annexation agreement. Did you want to?
Yeah. Mayor, I just, I know that if there, just to avoid any appearance of any impropriety, I think I need to recuse myself from discussion on this topic and any vote. My department does not receive direct money from the general fund, but I just want to avoid any appearance of impropriety.
And it's, and, and that's fine that the council member is, is choosing to do that, but I just also want to state on the record that it is not a conflict, it's not a legal conflict of interest because the source of potential conflict would be his employment with the county and there's a specific exclusion under California conflict laws where the source of income is a salary from a governmental agency, so, but I understand the council member Laura is recusing himself to avoid even the appearance of impropriety.
Okay. So each city would need to negotiate an annex agreement amendment. The interesting part of our meeting with the other mayors was the concern, an issue that I really hadn't even focused on, but I think is important to focus on, is over the last 30 years, what share of our property taxes, what's the dollar amount that has gone to the county and what have we, what have we received in return? Because the argument is that they're going to continue to provide services for the annexed areas, but my argument is it's not a 75-25 split. So when, that was actually a major concern and what really got the other mayors a lot more passionate about this issue. So, Mr. Bush, would you mind answering a question or two? So I think that if we do the study, and I believe in your study, you're going to take a historical look at cost and benefit, I don't know if it's a cost benefit, but can you explain what part, what I'm talking to you about in that area?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor. What I think, what I think you're asking us to do and what is in our proposal is we're basically going to recreate the annexation from the beginning, the agreement itself, and get some understanding of what they were considering when the agreement was put in place. I mean, these are existing throughout the county and, as you mentioned, every city has a different one. I've heard of recent agreements being drafted differently in other counties, so I know it can be done and it has been done. But our, our plan is to basically reconcile the tax sharing from beginning of the agreement up to its current date, provided we can find the information and report back to the city on what revenues were shared and what services the, the city may have received from those revenues. You know, I, I do foresee there may be some challenges in finding some of that data. I think when we, we talked to the county, I'm not sure how open they'll be with sharing some information, but we will make the ask. Nevertheless, we'll look through budgets and see if we can find something. I think one of the challenges we'll have is, one of the arguments I think we'll hear from the county is that the revenue sharing is to continue to provide for regional services like mental health and things of that nature. It may be hard to pinpoint that as a specific expense within the city. However, I think we can probably look at population and come with per capita expenses and come up with a methodology that we think may be able to make some sense of the numbers itself. So what will drive, I think, our study is the availability of information. You know, I think on, on the city side, finding old annexation agreements or looking at LAFCO and finding which, which documents are available will give us some indication of, of the history. And then ultimately, we'll have to look back at prior budgets and look at revenues to see what kind of property taxes were derived and then break those down even a little bit further. So I feel pretty confident we'll be able to get what we need from the city's information. The county will, we'll have to look back and see what we can do. One of our outside consultants used to work at LAFCO and knows some of the folks over there at the county pretty well and I may engage him to see if he can't help us get a little bit more of the information that's available. I, I assume that the, the work will be somewhat fluid, we'll take advantage of information that's available and we'll be reporting back to the city manager on some of the challenges that, that we do anticipate that we'll have. But we're going to do the best we can to give you the information, I think, that you're asking for. And, you know, what, what's interesting is when I first started working with the council when I was engaged first, I think I was the one that brought this up, saying, are you aware you have this agreement? And looking at the city's general plan and seeing that a lot of it was zoned residential, I think I raised the question of, I'm not sure you can provide service if you continue with this type of agreement.
Absolutely.
And so a lot of the communities that have these annexation agreements in the county, Hemet, you know, Lake Elsinore, for example, out in that area, you know, of, of the cities that are still developing, they're all developing housing.
Yep.
And I'm not sure they're fully aware of the impact. So it's, it's actually caused a lot of cities, including, say, Beaumont, to pursue CFDs and other natures, the nature of financing, to provide not only infrastructure but services. A lot of the other cities are, are providing services through CFD, similar to what you have, but in much, much larger amounts. They have public safety taxes in a lot of them that help support the police because the property tax isn't available.
Okay.
So we'll be able to look at some of that stuff.
And, and what I think would be powerful, because, you know, when I made the comment to the other mayors that, that, you know, we are, we've been talking about pursuing this and that, you know, we would like to have them on board, their, their comments to me right away were, you're not going to get this done on your own. This is going to have to be something where a lot of communities come together. But I think to take this first step, I think once it becomes clear, you know, over 30 years, there's got to be tens of millions of dollars in numbers we're talking about. I'm not saying tens of millions of dollars that we've been overcharged, but the, the numbers and, and the other mayors are bringing it up about their communities too, the numbers are going to be, I think, huge. And I think that will motivate other communities who are Lake Elsinore and the other communities who are planning on growing. So I think by us doing this, if we don't do this, we'll just move on with, boy, I think we're really getting a bad deal here. But if we do this, we may be able to start a momentum. It's an election year. How long do you think this would take for the scope of this?
It all depends on availability of information. I'm hoping just a couple of months.
Okay. There are three supervisors who are up for, there's three seats open, so, you know, and at least two of them are in the areas that I've already talked about, our area and the Hemet-San Jacinto area. And the comments I've heard from other mayors regarding their discussions with their supervisors, including a council member from the Temecula Mirieta area, which is another supervisor, their supervisors have all given them lip service and said that, hey, you know, if, if everyone goes along with this, you know, we, we might, you know, we'll support you on it. So I want to call them on that. Will your analysis also, you know, one of the arguments is that, well, the county doesn't have any money, but that's, you know, we didn't have any money and you still got to pay your bills. But will you be able to tell us the difference? For example, if a non-annexed resident, citizen, is still paying for county services.
That's right.
And, and so if an annexed, so someone who's been annexed into Beaumont shouldn't have to pay more per, for their, for their services than someone who's already in the city, in my opinion. So I would, it'd be interesting to see if, if we're going to be able to figure out what the annex versus the non-annex is. There's also three, four new cities who I'm sure have new.
I incorporated one of them.
Okay. Did you do a master annexation agreement with them?
I am trying to remember off the top of my head if, do you have a revenue sharing agreement as part of a new incorporation? That was Aruba Valley, I was the first finance director there.
Okay. So I'd be, I'd be interested to see what new agreements are looking like.
Yeah, I'll go back and look at that.
Because I can't imagine in today's economy that a city would, I don't think we would approve a 25-75 split right now.
You know, a couple, a couple of clarifications too. You know, we, we have a division that we perform in the work, it's the Public Management Group. They do special studies. And several years ago, I was asked to look at the tax that was going for a county library for a city that I was doing some work in versus what they were expending on the library. We found that it was a million dollars a year more that they were getting. We found that it was a million dollars a year more that they were getting in revenue than what they were putting into the library. And the county did come back and say, okay, let's work something out. So I know if, in some cases, we may be able to get down to some specifics.
Right.
And if we can, then those are the things I think you can start to negotiate with as opposed to the big picture. But you don't look, you don't find. You don't ask, you don't get. So-
And if, if we don't do it at this point, if we do do it, let me rephrase it, if we do do it and we find that there is significant arguments to be made, I think it's going to motivate other communities to, to follow suit. And they would have to obviously do their own studies because yours, yours is going to be Beaumont-specific, obviously.
That's right, yeah. And as you saw, Mayor, on, on our team, it's an interesting mix of individuals. So I have a public finance background, working for municipalities. Mr. Morris is a former municipal attorney, worked for water districts. The third person, Andy Heath, actually worked for counties. He was an assistant CAO for Placer County. So I think you're going to get a good mix of view in, in terms of what the report will look like too.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Comments. So, so, and I agree with the fact that the cities are going to be looking at what comes out of this for their own, you know, approach and how they're going to go about it. So I can't imagine them taking the initiative right now, so.
Correct.
So this is a good thing to go forward with. And my question you answered about the county cooperation, so please report back how that cooperation is going because from elected officials to others, you know.
Yeah, I, I will. Councilman Martinez, one of the concerns that I have is I don't want to spend a lot of your money chasing nothing.
Right.
You know, if I find there's a dead end, I'll reach out to the city manager and say, hey, we're, we spent five hours, six hours trying to pursue information, we're not getting it.
We do have an assistant city clerk who is an expert in public record request. And I'm sure she could help us with that.
I'll, I'll look that up.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Carroll?
I have some questions and some comments. First of all, I think that we're going to get a result where we'll be able to get our $25,000 back. I think that whatever we end up with is probably going to lead us to someplace where we can get certainly the $25,000 back and probably a lot more. One of the things, are you going to look at the point in time when this agreement was written? And what were the services that the county was providing for us at that particular point in time? And then how has that changed? And when did it change? Because I suspect that 30 years ago, we were a lot more needy of county services than we are now. I think probably as a city develops, you just get much better at providing that infrastructure. So I expect there's a significant difference.
But I think you'll find a lot of information in the LAFCO annexation requests from the city. It talks about their ability to provide service and any response the county may have about services at that time too.
Okay.
Because I think in that report, if I remember correctly, you have to identify what you expect the service cost to be. So in absence of the county giving us data, I know the LAFCO report will have some estimate on what services the county was providing and what the city was taking in. What will be interesting to see is if the city's estimate for service was sufficient by the, by the revenue brought in.
Okay.
Nope, cut some more, sorry. So, and the, I think that you're probably right, that the nugget of information that's going to be the most difficult to get is going to be the county piece. However, the county piece is what the other people who were in the room when the mayor had their meeting is going to benefit-
Right.
-the other cities. So in essence, we're kind of fronting the work on the county piece at this particular point in time with this project, where they're going to find out a lot more about what the county is paying for or has funded that will benefit them in their search.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I think the other bit of information that may be helpful, I'm not sure if we put it in our proposal, but I'd love to put a chart together of other cities and what their agreements are.
I agree. I wish that there was-
The ones that I saw, San Jacinto, Hemet, and Ban, well, Banning didn't have a copy of theirs at the time, were almost exactly what ours is. They were. But they were all, ours was 82, theirs was 79.
It's pretty standard. I think the percentage split is pretty standard, but I'm going to guess there's going to be some that aren't exactly that way, that they went in and bring me negotiated a little bit harder.
Yeah.
Yeah, the killer nugget piece of this is to find out the county information. And that sphere, all of the other cities will benefit from that knowledge that you find out about the county. The city part of it that affects each city is going to change a little bit, but that part is going to be so forthcoming from the cities that that part of the work is, is going to be, but once you get that template in place for finding out what there is or is not from the county, then that's the real gold, I think.
You're right.
So- Mr. Santos, any questions?
I'm sure they all said, go get them.
Oops, sorry.
No, I don't have a questions, but that, that'll be a really very, you know, very good information. Looking forward to see it within two to three months from now.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. I will move to approve item 13, to approve the attached proposal by Urban Futures for the fiscal review and analysis of the city of Beaumont's property tax sharing resolution with the county of Riverside.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes, and I'll step out for item 15 because it's reimbursement of travel expenses to me. And I'll let you do that.
Item 15, reimbursement of travel expenses for Mayor White. Recommended action is to improve the reimbursement request in the amount of $49.22. And the, the supporting documentation states that this is for the Lega Cities meeting that was in Norco and for travel back and forth with recording of proper mileage, it looks like. Is there any public comments on this?
None.
All right. Council discussion? Any council questions or?
I'll make a motion to approve item 15.
Second. Yeah.
So the motion has been made?
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Council reports. Ms. Carroll?
Thank you. I attended a meeting of the Vet Expo, and I, there was discussion about working with the city to do more with the Veterans Event for the coming year. So I said that I would convey that request to the city manager, that we start some informal discussions way ahead of time about doing a, a more impressive event for the veterans this year. And, you know, I can talk to you offline about that, about any resources that you may be able to get to help you with early discussions from the Vets Expo Committee on that. And in addition, there is, I met with the school, one of the teachers over at the school that was set up by council member Martinez for the T Now project that the school is getting involved in. And the school will be coming to do a presentation of concept of their idea on Thursday of this week. So we are looking forward to it. And I do hope that at some point after the project's completed, that we bring the students who were involved and the teacher that was involved to counsel and thank them for working with the transportation, past transportation and T Now on doing that. So at some point, I'll make the city manager aware of that. I also attended the retirement reception for a city librarian over at Beaumont Library. And I recommended to the city manager and the city clerk that we bring in the Claire to a future city council meeting and give her acknowledgement for all her years of service. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Laura?
You know, really, the only thing I have to report this evening is just, we're coming up to the end of another year, my third year. Just what a pleasure it's been to work with the new council members. I think we've made a lot of progress, or continue to make progress, and just want to thank them for their service and working with us, working with me. And welcome the new council member.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, so I stopped by the Grange for the Winterfest, and I want to thank the Parks District for continuing to provide an excellent community event for the past area. I attended the Inland Empire Economic Partnership Awards with two other members of the council. And, you know, I don't know if we're going to elaborate on this, Mayor, but I just want to, I just want to mention that it's, it's a real good feeling to see the city be nominated for a award, especially from the Inland Empire Economic Partnership. I think it really shows the city making progress. I think it shows a tremendous progress towards our image recovery, and I think we're gaining the respect and acknowledgement that the city deserves and has earned. So I think I was really proud to, to be nominated for that, for the city. Lastly, I attended the RCA yesterday. Yes, and it's coming up. We remitted 26 permits for August and September for collection, mitigation collections. The RCA received a clean audit for its fiscal year 2017 for its audited financial statements. It got a no deficiency and no finding report. And lastly, of course, the species of the month, I know you're waiting for it, the Coast Range Newt. This, this animal is important for taking care of invasive species in the area, and it is toxic to humans, which I didn't know, so don't eat one. Thank you.
And I'm sure in about 10 minutes, we'll hear something from Mr. Part about the newt.
Write that down.
Mr. Santos?
Nothing to report. I just returned from vacation. So sorry, guys, that, you know, missed you on the last meeting. Went to, for the record, I went to Spain, Morocco, Portugal, and came back last Monday. And other than that, nothing to report.
Did you bring back our port?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought I asked you to bring us some port.
I don't want to.
I did attend the same award ceremony, and the city did receive honorable mention for being a smart city regarding our FIVER to the premise or the FIVER to the premise program that's been in place since 2004, I believe. And I agree with you, it was, it was, it was good to finally be able to talk, brag about something. I did notice, chief's not here, so deputy chief, during the Thanksgiving weekend and the, especially Black Friday and Saturday, there were police everywhere. I mean, we drove through the town and my kids just go, oh, there's another one. So I think, and then you had the, the mobile unit set up in the parking lot at Walmart. And, and I think it really sent a good message to the community that, that we were out there making sure that, you know, people didn't start stealing packages. So if you pass that along to the chief, I really appreciate what you guys did that weekend. Okay. And that's all I have. City treasurer report?
We did have a special finance and audit committee meeting last Tuesday, and Malana presented the fiscal year 2015 audit. So that was our first look at it. I believe it was at least my first look at it. The auditor was there, a member of the auditing staff, and he answered some of our questions, initial questions, and there were some questions from the public, and some of those were answered. She is, and Malana's going to bring it back to our committee meeting next Monday, on the 11th.
And if I remember that, it will then, will be seen at something on the 19th if, if the audit committee doesn't have too many changes? Is that correct?
Right. I believe that's what the plan is.
Okay. And is that all?
That is it.
City clerk report?
Nothing to report.
Okay. City attorney report?
The litigation status report is in your agenda packet. It is item number 16. And unless you have any questions on that, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Thank you. City manager report?
Oh, boy. I tell you, now, it's something y'all have been looking forward to for the last two weeks, I'm sure. It is interesting that the newt was the creature of the month. They did find a strain of it in Denver, and they have found out that there's an infection of the newt that's affected the Broncos, so that's why. As of week four, they fell off. I know y'all have expressed a lot of concern about that, so it is verified that that's been the problem. So anyway, and then I did see a quote from Councilman Laura regarding his third year anniversary. He said, it's, this last 15 years has just flown by. So congratulations on surviving three years.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So outside of that, I really don't have anything else to present to you, outside of a reminder that December 19th is still on tap.
Okay. Any future agenda item requests? All right, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:30.